I'm from the room.
You don't have it.
Okay, thank you.
Who is but reviving? Was that you name or was that?
I think I was from last Thursday. I'm muted.
Okay, so you're all right.
I think we're set. It's not from outside. It's from inside the boardroom. All right, we're recording, so.
Do you think you're ready or you're ready to go? Friday, we'll call the meeting to order. Pursuit to Section 7E of the Open Meetings Act, I as President of the McHenry County Conservation District have determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent at this time because of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and Governor Pritzker's related disaster declaration. I ask everybody your eyes for pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic for which stands one nation under God, visible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Dom?
Here.
Trustee Thomas?
Here. Trustee Brandt?
Here.
Trustee Fritz? Trustee Campbell?
Here.
Trustee Honey?
Present. Well, thank you. We have six trustees present, four in-house and two remotely. Reading of conservation ethic. Anybody have that in front of them? Bill, do you have that? Are you not saying?
Yes, I do.
All right, that'd be great.
All right, the conservation ethic, goal number six. To foster a conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us regardless of our basis or interest in nature, to develop a greater awareness of our role and and responsibility for the total community of life. The conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of the county's open space. Goal one, to preserve native plants and animals, geological features, and natural ecosystems that are threatened or endangered in McHenry County and to reclaim such ecosystems that have been degraded for the benefit of present and future generations and for their own sake.
Thank you. And Chris, could you do the pledge?
Oh, I choose not to.
What, you can't say? I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that.
May I?
Yes, go right ahead, Dave.
Uh, we pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and whale life in McHenry County, or quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources, thoughtfully develop cities and towns, and a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. Number 10, we will help build a sustainable and environmentally local economy by providing a destination for outdoor recreation experience.
Thank you, Dave. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I would move to adopt the agenda.
Dave has the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris has a second. Uh, roll call.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. A special recognition. I don't have these in front of me. Do you have those or what?
I do. The first one is the 2020 Beta Award by the Environmental Defenders of McHenry County. And we were honored with this recognition at their last meeting, which was not this past Sunday, but the Sunday, I believe. When was it?
It was yesterday. I already forgot.
It was just recent. The week saw a blur, but just recently, we were awarded this. So this goes out to the district in celebration of our 50 years, all the great work that's been done by our staff, our board, our volunteers. So it is quite an honor, and we did receive that during their annual meeting, which was virtual this year. So we will add that up to our trophies that we've got, right?
So thank the defenders for that.
Let's thank them. Destination Zero Award, Officers for Wellness, National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. Are you one with that?
Yes, so I will. I will start off, then I'm going to turn it over to Chief King. And it is my honor, as we've shared before, that our police department was honored as a finalist as a 2021 Destination Zero Award for Officer Wellness through the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial. And we are waiting to hear unless Laura comes on and we have good news. This is a very competitive program. There's a very variety of categories. And kudos to Chief King and the team. The really focus has been adjusting a work-life balance for the health and safety of our officers here at work, and then it translates over in how they lead at home and take care of our site. So Chief King, congratulations. And do you want to give a little bit more background about the program?
Thank you, absolutely. I would love to. So Destination Zero is a program that's run by the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Foundation. And the Destination Zero means that we are trying to get zero names added to the police memorial wall each year. So they're really trying to lessen the number of law enforcement deaths, not only line-of-duty deaths, but also the other reasons that law enforcement officers die. So they offer three different types of programs for awards. So the awards that we submitted for was a wellness program. They have a different officer safety program that's based on robust training models. And they have a comprehensive program, which is kind of like an all-inclusive type of thing. We looked at the wellness program, just because we're just not at the other categories yet. And so what was unique about this opportunity is usually the agencies that move up to the finalists are incredibly large agencies, your LAPDs, your Denver PDs, your Houston PDs, where there's, you know, thousands and thousands of officers, and they have tens of thousands of dollars in their budget to invest in officer wellness. Sometimes this includes medical screening. Sometimes it includes psychological screening. A lot of times it includes hiring professionals or practitioners to come in to do fitness programs, to do regimens. Well, I've been studying wellness in the police scape for quite some time, and I thought, you know, there's no reason a smaller agency can't do a smaller version of this program with almost zero monetary investment. So when I got to the agency, I started working with Sergeant Stewart and Kyle Reddick specifically, because they were the two that were most passionate about wellness and really creating a sense of work-life balance for the agency. And what we did was we created a little workout area at the Lost Valley Visitor Center shop. It was a storage area that was relatively unused. It's a very rough-around-the-edges type of area. It's not finished. It's like a workout area that you would have in your garage or something like that. But we started with plyo boxes, which are those boxes that you can either step up or jump up on. A lot of times you see CrossFit people doing that. And some TRX straps, which are straps that hang from the ceiling that allow you to do some suspension activities, such as push-ups and pull-ups and other strength-building activities. And then we just encouraged the officers, you know, to get out on foot patrol and do some physical activity as part of their daily routine. We started offering healthy snacks at the department. I would bring in every week a bag of oranges. And I have on auto-ship to my home these 100 calories of roasted nuts, and I put them out for the officers, you know. And after we got through all of the jokes about squirrels and do I really eat this way all the time, what we saw was that officers started grabbing the oranges. They started grabbing the nuts. And we, you know, started, I started sharing articles about nutrition and health-related things. We also did a robust suicide awareness campaign, because suicide is something that plagues the law enforcement profession at a very accelerated rate when it is compared against the rest of society. So anyways, after working on this for a couple of years, and then the first year we did that little bit with the workout area, and the second year we got a heavy bag, and we got some used kettlebells donated to us and some medicine balls. We had a pretty great little workout area that officers were using and that we're actually quite excited about. And we continued all the other efforts, and I was like, you know what? I'm going to write this up. There's no reason that you need to have a $200 fitness tracker per officer or a $1,000, you know, medical psychological screening assessment each year. We're really doing a lot with the little bit that we have. And so I was thrilled when we advanced to the finals, because this is the first time that a small agency has ever advanced to the finalist level for this national competition. Now, I don't have the results yet, and we are in the arena with the really big dogs, you know. So I don't know how it's going to progress, but the fact of the matter that we are here and that we're recognized for our efforts is a huge accomplishment and a huge compliment. And all of that attention belongs to the officers, who are the ones that are out there, working out, taking care of themselves, eating healthy, and really understanding that taking care of both your mental and physical health is an essential part of being prepared for a career in law enforcement.
Excellent. Thank you.
So I'll let you know if we win.
When did you find that? When was the?
They told me it was at the end of the month, so I was just, I was giddy, you know. I didn't say what day exactly, you know. And they said, they said, we have to do a couple of different assessments. We're not quite exactly sure how long it's going to take for the judging panel to come to a consensus, but we anticipate it at the end of the month, so.
Okay, well, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Pretty soon, yeah.
Been a week. Very good. Okay, and you have Katie Garrett, Communication Specialist. What's the?
So I'd like to introduce Katie Garrett. Wendy Cooper is on vacation. So she, Katie, comes to us with 10 years of experience, six years in the field of parks and recreation, specifically at the local agencies of Geneva, Round Lake, Oak Brook Park Districts, where she became proficient in marketing, graphic design, digital imprint communications, website maintenance, media promotions, and outreach. She has a degree in environmental design from Illinois State University, Gil Redbirds, and she's also a Certified Park and Recreation Professional, CPRP, has LEED Green Associate Accreditation, and is the president-elect for the Suburban Parks and Recreation Association, as well as an active IPRA member and past board member of the Round Lake Area Chamber of Commerce. We are very excited that she will add her passion and talents to our enthusiastic team here at the Conservation District. So welcome, Katie, and would you like to say a few remarks?
Sure, thanks for having me. Excited to be here. I love when people actually read all that stuff. It makes me sound so impressive, so I'll take it all. It's for real. I was born and raised in the Geneva-St. Charles area, so I'm familiar with the area, and I've got a personal connection to McHenry County. My father was a counselor at MCC for 20-plus years. So he was up in this area, up in that area for a while. So, yeah, I'm just really excited to be here, excited to be with the Conservation District. I think it just really fits my abilities and interests even more than a park district, but it still has all the fun. So excited to be here, excited to join this team. I'm really impressed with everything I've learned so far, so thank you for having me.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome.
So when was Kelly's, when Kelly starts? It's been a little while now.
Katie, you've been here just about, has it been a month already?
Yes, 30 days lives on Monday, I believe.
Okay, very good. Okay, trustees report. You want to have an inter-report?
I usually do.
Usually have a shout-out to someone.
I have, maybe I'll just stop. But I'm thrilled about the approved bake at School Springs Fenn, and I appreciated the disability training that, on the video that was part of the WikiWOW in April 6th, March 6th. And again, I want to shout out to the $50,000 that Amy and that's team got for the Ringwood Prairie Trail, so thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. County Board Liaison report. Kelly?
Sorry about that. I had to mute, and I'm sorry if you hear any hammering or anything in the background. We're having, my husband's working on the bathroom. So there's not a whole lot going on. The, I have been trying to come up with a document to send to all of the county board members and the chairman to describe all the awards that the Conservation District and the defenders and everybody has been receiving. I think you guys are definitely, we need to share all those accolades. I also, like I said in the COW, want to have a resolution congratulating the 50-year anniversary in April at the meeting. And other than that, I really don't think there's a whole lot. So as usual, I'm always here for questions or comments. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Kelly.
Here we get the president's report. I just have two very brief ones. I had a letter from the Dahlman family, actually it sat here for a couple of months before I had, that sold the land in Coral Township or Coral to us or the foundation of us or whatever. But anyway, they were very thrilled with the way it was handled, and they thought our staff did a great job, and so they thank us for that. Perfect. And then I thought Wendy would be here tonight. I had somebody want to, some information from me, and when I got into it, it was kind of a little bit scattered and this and that. And so at the last minute, I turned it over to Wendy, and she pulled it all together very quickly and did a great job on it.
What did they want? Just general info?
Yeah, they were going to write an article and went anywhere from where would you like to fish to are dogs allowed here to where can you get a picnic area to whatever. And so I thought, well, I could, I could research all this and pull it together, but I knew Wendy could pull it together, and she did very quickly. So thank, thank you to Wendy for that. And that's all I have. Public comments, one. Anybody from the public out there would like to comment? Do you see anybody?
I don't see anybody.
Thank you. Uh, board business, consent agenda. So Dave, this.
Well, is there anybody that wants to pull anything?
Nobody would mention anything beforehand.
Then I move that we approve the consent agenda as follows. 12.1, approval of notice of the previous meetings, 12.1A, February 18, 2021, Committee of the Whole. 12.1B, February 23, 21, regular board meeting. And 212C, January 26, regular board meeting, executive session. 12.2, acceptance of the Treasury report, acceptance of the Treasury report for February 28, 2021, as presented. Resolution 2116, a resolution to award a one-year contract to A Press of Elgin, Illinois, lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the printing and mailing of four issues of Landscape Newsletter in the amount of $8,539 per base, per bid, per issue. Resolution 2117, a resolution authorizing the executive director to advocate agricultural lease agreement with Zachary A. Nasmic of Morango, Illinois, the highest responsive and responsible bidder on the 82.7 plus or minus acre at Pleasant Valley, located at Pleasant Valley Conservation Area for a period of three years. Authorization to prepare specifications and let bids to hire a contractor or contractors for the natural areas herbicide management countywide. Authorization to prepare specifications and let bids for the purchase of two 6x6 ATVs with rear box for natural areas management work countywide. Authorization to prepare specifications and let bids for the re-roofing of the Brookdale Administrative Office complex buildings. Authorization to preparation, specifications, and let bids for the streambank stabilization of the bridge over Crystal Creek on the Prairie Trail Multi-Use Regional Trail in Algonquin, Illinois. Resolution 2118, a resolution authorizing the license agreement with L.L. Bean for the use of the hollies and Philpro R.R. conservation areas and Prairie View Education Center for paddleboard archery, fly casting classes for the 2021 summer fall program season. And I'm honored to School Springs Stream and Wetland Mitigation Bank, 12.10A, Resolution 2119, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute the long-term management assurances document for School Springs Wetland and Stream Mitigation Bank at Glacial Park Conservation District, and Ordinance 211001, an ordinance authorizing the execution and recording of the Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants relative to School Springs Wetland and Stream Mitigation Bank at Glacial Park, Illinois. And Resolution 202120, a resolution accepting the 2020 annual wildlife decalogy report as presented, which was excellent. Resolution 2121, a resolution accepting the 2020 hunting report and consensus to support the recommendations for the 2021 hunting directives, also excellent. And Resolution 2122, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a necessary contract for the IPBC for Delta Dental for the period of July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, through the Intergovernor Personal Benefits Cooperative.
Thank you, Dave. Lynn, would you like to second that?
Yes, I will second. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Roll call.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Fritz? Oh, sorry. Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to new and unfinished board business. Approval of bills payable for the month of February 2021. Treasurers' internal audit. Dave, have you pulled some?
I have. Let's see. Vendor A, the 5451, associated electric contract for $4,575. Number two, vendor L, 7925, helicopter, Lake Shore Helicopter LLC for $2,156. And does anybody have one that want to give, or I'll give one more. If there are none, I'll go. Vendor N, 8375, New Ag Business Inc. for $979.98.
What was that last one?
New Ag Business Inc.
Ag is an E-G?
No, E-G-G, Ag.
Oh, E-G-G, okay. That's, all right, thank you. All right. Bill, would you like to make motion for 131B?
131B, I move that we approve the payment to Conserve FS as indicated on the submission of Bill's pending report for the period ending February 28, 21.
I'll second. Second. Roll call.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
All abstaining. So we have five, four, and one abstention. 131C, Bill?
I would move that we approve the payment of the balance of bills as indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month ending February 28, 21.
Okay, do you have a second?
I will.
Dave, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is the lease agreement with Boulder Ridge property owners there, and we need to remove and pull that off the table as it was tabled before.
I will so move to remove it from the table.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Bill? Okay, Bill, seconds. With that, I need a roll call vote.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously.
So then I will move to approve Resolution 2103, a resolution authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with Boulder Ridge Villas Property Owners Association for the premises known as Lot 26, Boulder Ridge Country Club West 9, Phase 1, Exner Marsh Conservation Area.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, second from Bill. Any discussion? Is it good?
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Hey, let's see. You have a bid award from Energy. We have a resolution for the Energy bid. Would you like to make that motion?
I'll move that we affirm awarding a contract to Constellation New Energy of Chicago, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for electric service at 15 district locations for one year beginning June 21, or June 1 of 21.
Is that what mine's reading?
No, I was reading off of this.
Oh.
I can read it off of the other.
Yeah, well, that's, it's not that I'm reading.
What is your, what's the difference?
Mine says a bid, an energy bid for electrical service. Consideration of Resolution 2123, a resolution to affirm the awarding of Energy bid for electrical services.
That was pre-bid opening. That was out on your agenda before we.
I thought this was the new updated agenda.
I put one in your folder. Is that the one that was in your folder?
It's in italics. I can't read it.
We opened the bid today, so what we had gave it was.
Bill, I apologize. I don't see how I missed that.
Go ahead and finish. Go ahead and finish, Bill.
All right, so we're moving to affirm awarding a contract to Constellation New Energy of Chicago, Illinois, lowest responsible and responsive bidder for electric service at 15 district locations for one year beginning June 1 of 21 at a fixed price of .05641 cents per, or dollars. So I'll do that again. $0.05641 per kilowatt hour. And then the bid number is 0320.15.01.
Thank you, Bill. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Chris, seconds? Any discussion? Win or a win? I'm not seeing if we're all right.
Yeah, we're good. We're good. We're good.
Okay, I'll call a roll.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously.
And I just want to make the comment that, Megan, this right here, I just missed it.
That's okay.
It's my fault.
It's fine.
It's your first mistake in.
You've got the last hour.
Don't let it happen again. Okay, 13.4, demolition of glacial conservation area structures. Are you wanting to tee anything up here, or are you good without motion?
Well, just let me briefly, from our conversation at the COW, we presented, Director Kramer presented two buildings, and we want to move them to the demolition. And then we also want to prepare specifications, so there's two parts. I think it's important to understand, you know, there seems to be concern of the safety. And we have an adjuster that is coming out to review the property this upcoming Thursday. The importance of this is that we build it into an already busy schedule of our staff, but this will allow us some room to be able to do the necessary work. With bids such as this, there's a lot that goes into that, not only from maybe abatement to permitting, et cetera. So it's not just, you know, that you can just turn on a dime, but at least gets us started. John, did you want to add anything to this discussion on the buildings and?
The only updated information I have, which just came in this morning, Elizabeth, is that the insurance company, Perderma, is sending an engineer out as well, because they want to take a look at the structure there. So I learned that this morning. The adjuster is, as Elizabeth said, is coming out on Thursday, and I don't know if the engineer's going to be with that individual or not, but we'll make arrangements for that person to see the structure as well.
Well, I would move to approve Resolution 2124, a resolution authorizing the placement of the cold storage building and the intern house at Glacial Park Conservation Area on the district's demolition list, and to authorize the removal of the structures as resources allow.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Bill has a second. Any more discussion? Did we discuss this last Thursday? So it's good. All right, I'll call a roll.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Honey?
Yes, motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to 13.41B. I'm sure that was supposed to be a 13 there.
Yes.
So anyway, so would you like to make that motion?
I'll move that we authorize the preparation of specifications and letting of bids for the demolition of the cold storage building and intern house at Glacial Park Conservation Area.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will.
Dave seconds. Any more discussion? Okay, roll.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. To Executive Director's Court. Elizabeth?
Okay, um, to start off with, I want to thank everybody. We did get all of the board's responses to IAPD, so we are set to go. Peter Murphy will be here on the twentieth during our regular meeting at five o'clock, uh, and we'll go into executive session, uh, for that. So, um, and, uh, well, he'll have information. I don't know if I'll have things to send out in advance, but I will find out and I will correspond with you. Um, in regards to legislation, I will also be bringing back in April, our legislative program for the year as we do. This provides direction on what types of legislation that we will support, uh, as a proponent, or legislation that we would be an opponent towards. Um, and so that will be coming. If you have legislation that you would, or aware of, that you believe once I send that out, I'll probably send a draft version out in advance for just the board to review and provide feedback. Um, things are happening in Springfield. There is one bill that we were talking with the Illinois Association of Conservation and Forest Preserve Districts, and that was the design build opportunity for us, and that would allow us to enter into contracts, uh, scope and performance, uh, in a phased procedure without, you know, having to go back out and start working with somebody and then have to rebid this. So this is up in committee on the House side tomorrow. Uh, we have provided a slip to support, as with our other forest preserve and conservation front, since this would be advantageous to us and, uh, would be most cost-effective. So that is moving forward. Um, at the federal level, um, really exciting news if you had not heard, but the Department of the Interior, we have our first indigenous, uh, Deb Holland, uh, was introduced, uh, representing the Department of the Interior, and of course, with our work that we do with federal lands. Um, this is really important, and so we're really excited about this opportunity. Um, there is word as well that federal funding, they don't do earmarks anymore, but a word that they are working on doing collaborative types of programming, and so basically a vetting process of a top ten projects and working. So we're busy working it shovel-ready, looking internally at other projects that the district has that we could then speak to our U.S. Congressmen and senators, uh, to see if that would be something that we could gain their support, uh, with some additional dollars on. So we'll keep your price of that. And, uh, that's all I have.
Be grateful. Thank you. Committee assignments. Trustees report on conferences or meetings attended. Uh, Lynn, Fox River Ecosystem Partnership.
Okay, so, um, I obviously missed everything in March. All the big stuff was then. Um, let's see here. So they had their Fox River Summit on the eleventh when I fell. Um, coming up, um, so, but that's actually available online if anyone wants to go back and look at any of the sessions that they had there. Like I said last time around, the Wonder Film Festival was also this March. Um, that was on the thirteenth. I did, I guess, I missed that. That was Kiss the Ground. That is still available to stream through Netflix if anyone is interested. Um, coming up next month, um, April fourteenth, Jack Darren, who is head of the Sierra Club for Illinois Chapter, um, will do an Illinois Conservation Update, given Legislative Update of what is happening in Springfield. Um, we have Earth Day, and then on May twelfth, I'm just going to get, I'm going to do a plug for that coming up because in May, Ed Collins will be at our membership meeting, and he will be speaking, giving his presentation on the Fourth Conservation Movement. And honestly, if you haven't seen him yet, uh, give this talk, I really would encourage you to do so. It's, he does a great job. Um, and that is it for FREP.
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, Dave, Kish Walker River.
Well, the, uh, Kish, uh, had a watershed roundtable, which is the exact same representation of FREP, and, uh, there were twenty-four people present, SWCDs, uh, many watershed groups, um, Farm Bureau, um, FANs, was there, park districts, P and D, McHenry County P and D, um, and cities were involved. Uh, but they were going over all of the funding to see if there's any new funding, and they brought up one, green infrastructure grant opportunities, and it was stormwater management techniques primarily with a primarily primer, uh, goal of to preserve and restore, minimize and enhance natural hydrology. And I immediately thought of Boulder Bog, where we're trying to restore that hydrology. But when you went through the whole list of very end, projects that would be accepted have to be directly upstream or downstream of impervious. So that doesn't qualify. To make a long story short, everything that they mentioned, staff's already aware of. So no new news.
Okay. Ed, uh, RAP?
I, I have nothing to report on RAP. RAP is pretty much wrapped up.
Okay. Should we take, should we take that off the agenda, and you'll let us, you'll let us know if anything happens that we need to know about?
Uh, yes, if I hear of anything, I, I will.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, if, Megan, if you could take that out. Great, thank you. Chicago Wilderness. Elizabeth?
Uh, the only thing I want to say, if anybody didn't get a chance to tune in, um, last week, we started a racial equity series, and the premier program that kicked it off was our very own Tom Simpson with Tom Talks and Jackie Barrow, and they had, um, hundred, several hundred people in attendance for that, uh, workshop, and it's a set of a series. So again, it's a shout out to them, uh, for the work that they're doing here and, and the district picking a lead.
I listen to it.
And, um, so, still online. It'll be podcast available, so again, shout out to them.
Okay, uh, Pat's not here for the Farm Bureau. Uh, Dave, are you?
Yeah, there was, uh, the IAPD, Illinois Association of Park Districts Legislative Breakfast without a breakfast because it was Zoom, uh, but there was sixty-nine participants, twenty-two park districts, recreation districts, of course, MCCD, and I was impressed on how many state senators and representatives were there in support of IAPD. Um, so, um, it was a very interesting meeting, but actually the, the big thing is, uh, almost all of the senators and representatives said positive things about conservation and park districts, and so that was very good.
You know, as you were saying that, I mean, that's all very important, but also, uh, as you were saying that all the breakfasts and dinners are being missed, everybody should be losing weight like.
No.
There's, there's no dinners and breakfasts.
My wife's making sourdough.
So you're making up for it all.
Yeah.
Everything Conservation Foundation, Linda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, um, they have their meeting. Um, they, you can't hear me. Okay. Um, they are working on the fiftieth. They are, the sign for the bog pier is on schedule to be in the spring. Um, I'm happy to hear and that Brad would like a, um, spreadsheet of all the projects that they have said that they would help us with every time they meet, so they keep up with that and know where we are and what we're doing with that. So I was really happy to hear that he wanted to have that going, going every time going forward. So I think that's it.
Okay, and everything's on schedule and looking good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Lynn, card.
All right, so nothing's happening, um, just like last month. I'm, uh, the next meeting is, uh, May twenty-sixth at seven PM. It's their May annual meeting, um, and that will be via Zoom, so I'm assuming you'll need to, uh, register for that. Um, and that, I think, is it at this point.
Okay, you could go right into green drinks.
Go right into green drinks. So green drinks, um, April, like I mentioned earlier, is Earth Day, so, uh, the Green Drinks Committee, uh, thought it would be a good idea to highlight the Conservation District being the premier, uh, land preservation agency in the county, and also being our fiftieth anniversary. So, um, Elizabeth is gracious enough to offer to assist me in presenting, um, that, for that program on the first Wednesday in April. I'm going to be honest, I forget what day that is. And we'll just be highlighting the history of the, uh, district, um, kind of, and the major accomplishments over time. Uh, talk about the fiftieth anniversary, talk about, a little bit about our programming, um, and, uh, talk about possible, you know, opportunities for the future. Just kind of a, a recap of what we're doing.
Okay, very good. Okay. So Elizabeth, you're off the Shared Investment Study of Algonquin and Curie Subarea Plan and Stream Committee.
Yes, so there is, uh, we're going to have one final meeting, I believe, with the Shared Investment Study, and there's been no action on the Algonquin and Curie Subarea Planning Group. I think they're kind of winding down on whatever report COVID, but, uh, but the Shared Investment Study, I mean, that was a great project with the county, and obviously I've shared before that Shalen is now working on some intergovernmental collaborations of where things make sense for, you know, some government to be working together for cost-effectiveness, and, uh, so that continues, but we'll be wrapping that project up. And that was a CMAP, uh, uh, grant-oriented type project assisted with that.
So when is that final meeting going to be, did you say?
I believe it's either this week or next week here. I was just pulling my calendar to see when it was on, um. Sorry, my calendar with all these things going on here that, uh, it is, actually, it's this Thursday at ten.
It's in two days.
Yep.
All right, uh, let's see, John Kramer for McHenry County Council Mayor's Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan.
Yes, um, thanks, John. It, uh, they, the group did meet, um, last week, and, uh, there was a nice discussion about, we did get a presentation on the, from the consultant on where they are with that. Uh, I'm gonna, they, they used a number of about thirty to forty percent through this process. They are still in the phase of gathering information, both, um, um, so out on the website, uh, which is, uh, I believe if you, if you just searched McHenry County Connection, uh, you would find it would pop up. Um, they are still soliciting input from people. Um, so that process is moving and continues to move. One interesting thing shared at the MAP meeting, and this was shared by the McHenry County Department of Transportation, uh, was that they are working with the McHenry County Defenders on, uh, labeling all the streams and the watersheds that those streams are in that, uh, on wherever a bridge, wherever a county road crosses a bridge. Um, they, they haven't gotten it to the townships yet, but they're, they're working on the county roads at this point. So I thought that was kind of an interesting thing. You've seen that from time to time. I've seen it in other counties, and, uh, now McHenry County's doing it. The last item I have, which is, I, I thought was, was i- very impressive, is that McHenry County, uh, Department of Transportation is, um, creating a policy on, um, basically a, a new set of standards for both, um, uh, to add on and off-street, uh, pedestrian and bicycle accommodations for street projects. Uh, whenever they do a renovation or repair, um, or repavement, they will consider those items. Uh, so they're in the early stages of developing that, um, and it sounded very comprehensive, and it's a, it's a great step in the right direction for, um, McHenry County D O T. So, uh, we're excited to see that unfold.
Okay, great. Anything else? Thank you, John. Can you visit McHenry County?
So we had a board meeting on the fourth of March. Uh, the focus of, was reopening and really working towards special events and tourism marketing, and, uh, basically waiting for the governor to provide some direction on, uh, larger assemblies. And I think as we're seeing as we move into that bridge to Phase Five and, uh, with more vaccines, that will be helpful because that is important. The other thing that we discussed was investing in a study to understand economic impact, and the district would be very interested in that, as well as tourism, and what does it have economically to the local businesses, and being able to track that with some, some better data. So, um, we'll be working on that, and, uh, once we get moving and have data to share, I'll be happy to provide you input on that.
Very good. Thank you. I don't have anything else for outreach contacts, so I think we're good there. Brings us to public comment two. Does anyone have anything that anybody out there in the public would like to make a comment at this point?
I don't see anything.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie.
So then I would like to move to go into executive session pursuant to two C twenty-one, uh, two C five, and two C eleven of the open meeting act.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Lynn seconds?
Linda.
I'm sorry. I, I knew I made a mistake right away.
That's me. That's what I do.
Okay, could I, uh, have a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Thomas?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. We will go into executive session. We will reconvene immediately. I don't believe we have any action to be taken, so, uh, uh, I mean, people are welcome to join back in, but I don't think there'll be anything there. Okay?
See ya.
I'm all right now?
Yep.
Okay. A motion from Bill to adjourn. Is there a second?
Go ahead. Yes.
Dave seconds. Uh, roll call?
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Dom?
Yes.
Trustee Brandt?
Yes.
Trustee Campbell?
Yes.
Trustee Henny?
Yes. We are adjourned.
Six fifty-five PM. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night, everyone. Have a good night.
Bye.